All right, thank you for your patience, everyone. We had a meeting that, a budget meeting that went a little bit over. But all important dialogue and progress made prior to us being here tonight. So I'm going to call to order the Thursday, February 29th, 2024 Royal Oak City Commission Meeting to Order. We're going to begin with an invocation given by Commissioner Colo, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. I ask that you stand if you can, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, when I sat down to write the invocation this week, I couldn't quite decide what to talk about. You know, I want to discuss some of the many great things going on. We just had a public art contest for nearly 200 kids drew art that's on the windows in our downtown buildings. I mean, what a testament to their creativity and the youth of the youth in town. I kind of want to talk about climate change. It was 75 degrees on Tuesday, which while it was amazing, it's extremely scary that the earth is just crying and on fire right now. So I couldn't figure it out. Naturally, I sat down and started to scroll social media to try to, you know, take a little break. And that's when I came across the invocation of Senator Mallory McMorrow that she gave in the Senate this week. Inspired by one of my all-time favorite quotes, "Good writers borrow from others; great writers steal them outright," I decided her invocation would be perfect. So she started talking about how we're on the threshold of a highly contested presidential election this year. And the words McMorrow chose from, a prayer given by Father James Barnum, a Jesuit priest who's been appointed by Pope Francis, really resonates with me. So a time when our community and Indiana nation finds itself at a crossroad of cultural and environmental change, these words offer a beacon. So as they start, "God, grant me the serenity to accept I cannot change people," which is pretty much everyone, "since I'm clearly not you, God." Talk about not being perfect, I screwed up the prayer on line one. So let's start that prayer over again. "God, grant me the serenity to accept the people I cannot change," which is pretty much everyone, "since I'm clearly not you, God," at least not the last time I checked. "And while you're at it, God, please give me the courage to change what I need to change about myself," which is frankly a lot, "since, once again, I'm not you," which means I'm not perfect. "It's better for me to focus on changing myself than to worry about changing other people who, as you will know, remember me saying, I cannot change anyway. Finally, give me the wisdom just to shut up whenever I think I'm clearly smarter than everyone else in the room, that no one knows what they're talking about except me, or that I alone have all the answers. Basically, God, grant me the wisdom to remember that I am not you." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
As a graduate of one of the fine Jesuit universities in this country, I appreciate an invocation that does reference a Jesuit clergy. Thank you, Commissioner.
Odd that she's a graduate of the same university.
Odd, odd. Okay. All right. Well, I love this part of the agenda when we have what I'll call local celebrities here to visit and give us important updates on some of the hard work they're doing. The city of Royal Oak has had a strong and important partnership with the Oakland County Treasurer under Robert Wittenberg's leadership, and he's here tonight to give us some updates. And I'm grateful for his participation tonight. Treasurer Wittenberg, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Thanks for having me. So glad to be here. I feel great being here. Hello, everyone, and hello everyone behind me here. So I have a PowerPoint, but I don't think we actually got it over here in time, so I apologize. But I'm not going to take that long. Just came to talk about the time that we're in the tax cycle right now for property taxes and the tax cycle, how it is for the state. Anyone that owes their 2021 or prior year taxes is subject to foreclosure this year. And so I am kind of traversing the county, going from as many council and township meetings as I can to get this message out there. Actually, I was just at Pontiac before heading over here. So every year on March 1st, if you don't pay your local taxes, so everyone tuning in here, if you don't pay your summer or winter taxes to the city of Royal Oak, it gets turned over to us at the county, and then we, in essence, become the collections agent for those taxes moving forward. And this year, March 31st actually falls on a weekend. So usually the foreclosure deadline is March 31st. This year, because it's a weekend, April 1st is the last day. So that's why I'm doing a full court press, letting people know if you have delinquent taxes, so taxes from 2021 or prior, you are subject to foreclosure. But I always tell people, in our office, our goal, our job is to collect taxes, is not to foreclose. That is not what we want to do. But, you know, we're obviously trying to follow the statute, but we can't help people unless they tell us that they need help. So that's why I'm out and about, really encouraging people to reach out to us. You can call our office, 248-858-0611. You can email us, treasurer@oakgov.com, or go to our website, oakgov.com/treasurer. Within our office, we have a financial empowerment center. So Rita, who heads up that department, is like a financial coach. So she will work with people on getting, you know, doing a budget for them, seeing if there's grants or resources available for them. We also, within our office, do what are called taxpayer assistance meetings. So these are one-on-one meetings with people that are having financial difficulties and are behind on their taxes. And we can do it over the phone, we can do it via Zoom. If people want to meet in person, you can come to our office. So we just want people to know that we're there to help. Just to give an idea, again, I don't have the slides up here, but to give you an idea, I mean, thankfully, in Oakland County, we're very blessed. 96% of people pay their taxes on time to their local community. So only 4% actually gets turned over to the county. Out of 83 counties, we're the lowest. I mean, one of the lowest when it comes to percentage there. So like, to give you an example, last year for 2023, we had about 45,000 parcels that were turned over. And by the end of, you know, going through this kind of robust outreach, trying to help people get them on repayment agreements, we only foreclosed on 95 properties last year, which is our lowest we've ever had in the county. And of those, most of those were vacant. So it was either a vacant land or a vacant structure. So really did a lot of work to try to help everyone in the community. So if you're listening at home, I think the number, last I checked, in Royal Oak is there are 30 parcels right now that are subject to foreclosure, specifically in Royal Oak. And for any of you, we can actually send you that list if you ever wanted to knock on your neighbor's door, to really encourage them to reach out to us or to try to make a payment. We have done, obviously, per statute, we have sent multiple first-class mail, priority mail. We have visited the property twice. So if it is a vacant parcel, we state the property. If there's a structure there, we post the property. It was put in the newspaper, the Oakland Press. So we've done, obviously, all the statutory requirements to let people know, but obviously we want to go above and beyond, as I said, because foreclosure impacts not just the house or the business, but their neighbors and the entire community, right? So that's why we're out and about, trying to see as many communities as possible. I was talking to Commissioner Colo, actually. I wasn't here last year, I apologize. And as I'm like making my way around the community, it's tough with there's 63 cities, villages, and townships in Oakland County, so more than any other county in the state. So again, I won't get to all of them, but trying to get to as many as possible. And obviously, I'm your neighbor living just two miles that way. So this was easy tonight to come over here. But I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to speak in front of you. I'm going to just remind you, if you're not listening to anything else I say, the most important thing is to remember that we are here to help. Reach out to us, 248-858-0611, oakgov.com/treasurer, or email treasurer@oakgov.com. So I think that's all I really have. So I'll obviously answer any questions, or if there's anything else that you all...
Questions for Treasurer Wittenberg. Just to point a clarification. The numbers you said, you said there were 45,000 potential properties that were going to go into foreclosure, and you actually only foreclosed on 95 of them?
So if you think about it, last year was 2023 foreclosure, right? So I'm talking numbers from the 2023 foreclosure. So 2023, March 31st of 2023 was the foreclosure deadline. There were 45,000 taxes from 2020 taxes that were turned over, right? So they were turned over after 2020, and then through those three years, so what, two years, right? So the first year was owed to Royal Oak, or to the, it's countywide, sorry, so countywide, and then two years within our office. So yes, it went down only to 95 out of those 45,000.
So is there a way to put it? You had 45,000 properties that were in the rear years, they didn't pay their taxes, and you found a resolution with a vast majority of those getting down to a number of 95 where a resolution couldn't be made, which is some fraction of 1%.
Yeah, oh yeah, much below that.
That's amazing work.
But thank you, but I can't take credit for all. But I mean, some people, you know, they're late on their payment by, you know, a few days, whatever it is, it gets sent over to us, they make that payment.
Sure.
You know, so, because the first notice they get from us, so like this year, right? So tomorrow, 2023 taxes, right? So summer, winter, 2023 taxes were due to the city of Royal Oak by 5:00 PM today, I assume, through Treasurers here, Anne Marie, right?
Jane Marie.
Jane Marie, sorry, Jane Marie. They would have been due here at 5:00, and then tomorrow, if anyone missed their 2023 taxes, they come to us to pay. And they call us or come to our office. So some people will miss it by just a couple days, and then they'll reach out to us and make that payment, right? So I can't take all the credit, right? Some people just realize that they missed it, or there's sometimes occasionally like an oversight with a mortgage company, and then they take care of it. So I don't want to take all the credit, but as you get down to like the nitty-gritty details, at one point, you know, we, I think we are on, people that we have actually spoken with and got them onto repayment agreements is somewhere between 1,500 and 2,000.
That's still remarkable. I mean, when you're dealing with a fraction of a fraction of a percent, yeah, some of them are low-hanging fruit, and some of them, your team really has to work to find something amicable for every other taxpayer, but at the same time keeping people in their homes.
That's right.
You know, people come upon hard times, doesn't matter what your zip code is.
That's right.
It's tough work, it's hard work, it's noble work, and we're grateful for what you do for, unfortunately, the people that fall into that position here in our community.
Thank you. And it affects every community in Oakland County. I mean, there's some of the communities that you would think they would never have someone that is subject to foreclosure, and we've had somewhere very last, you know, that last week where we're like scrambling to do what we can to help them, even the communities where sometimes I had issues with their, you know, sitting elected officials saying it's not happening in their community. And I'm like, okay, let me just show you that it is happening everywhere, right? So we're here to help.
Appreciate it.
So, yeah. Thank you all.
Thank you, Treasurer Wittenberg.
Good to see you all.
All right, that brings us to item five tonight, which is the approval of the agenda. Commissioner Macy?
Approval.
Commissioner Macy moves approval. Is there a second for that motion? We have a second by Commissioner Colo. Discussion on the agenda. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have established an agenda. All right, item six, public comment. Just the quick notes before public comment. The city commission values and relies on the input of our fellow citizens to help us make decisions. Now is the time set aside for the public to address the city commission on any city-related issue, whether it's on the agenda or not. I ask that comments be directed to the city commission as a whole and not to individual commissioners. If you wish to speak tonight at public comment, please wait until recognized by me, Mayor Fournier, then come up to the podium. For the record, you will state your name and your address. Please be mindful, the city commission wants to hear from everyone who wishes to speak tonight, so comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, not per topic. And there's a timer at the podium to help you keep track of your time. If you don't wish to speak tonight, no problem, we all have email addresses, it's actually probably the best way to get ahold of us. And please note that the city commission doesn't typically respond directly to questions during public comment, however, we are taking notes, and we will ask those questions when the topic comes up on the agenda, or if your issue is not on the agenda tonight, our city manager and city staff, and of course, city commission if necessary will follow up. But it's important that you leave your contact information with our community engagement specialist, Ms. Judy Davis over there, the person with the biggest smile on her always. And she can get your contact information, so the questions aren't just rhetorical or going within air, we actually know who to answer them to. All right, with that, who's first? Yes, sir, in the great vest.
I have a packet I would like to hand off.
Sure, if you want to hand it over to our city clerk, she can make sure that the copies come down this way.
My name is Fred Merrim, and I'm owner and president of FDM Contracting, 49156 Van Dyke, Shelby Township, Michigan. Our company has worked in the city of Royal Oak since 2002 and has successfully completed 32 projects and completed them on time without any claims. I am here this evening regarding the cap 2410 water main improvements on which we bid. This contract was put on the agenda this evening for the city council to approve and award, which I am protesting. My company submitted a bid on February 9th for this project, and it was the lowest responsive bid. Having worked and completed numerous projects for 22 years in the city of Royal Oak, that should attest to FDM Contracting being a responsible bidder. However, the city engineering department has recommended the city council to award contract to Vertertery Contracting and the third-place bidder in a difference of $500,000, which by the way, Vertertery is a good contractor like us, FDM. Like I stated, if you follow the recommendation, it would result in an additional expense to the city taxpayers of $500,000. In 2022, city of Royal Oak adopted ordinance 22, or 2022-7, the ordinance states that contractors on a, rates contractors on a point-scoring system regarding certain criteria, which is beyond the standard criteria and such. The low bidder is not always awarded a contract. Therefore, the taxpayer dollars are being wasted. All of the contractors bidding on these projects are reputable and required to submit their credentials, based on the questionnaire and point system that this does not help you choose a more qualified contractor. This type of ordinance is unfair to contractors and extremely neglectful to the taxpayers of Royal Oak. Hence, 2022, there were three specific projects that have been awarded to contractors that did not submit the lowest bid. Two of them went to second-low bidder, and the third one went to the fourth-low bidder. And now, if you award 2410 to Vertertery, this would result in the taxpayers paying $1.5 million in excess spending of the same work. Along with 2410, which I discussed earlier, there's another project that was bid at 2411, where we were low on the project as well. We will note on your agenda that the engineering department has canceled this because of the difference of our low bid and third bidder would have been additional, almost $1.7 million, more if it was awarded. As upholding responsibility, city council...
Mr. Mayor, I need you to finish your last sentence, sir.
As upholding responsible, city council members, how can you justify this continuation of unnecessary overspending to the residents and businesses who pay taxes in the city of Royal Oak by keeping the adopted ordinance 2022-07?
Thank you, sir.
Can I have one more paragraph?
We have other people that want to speak.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? See a hand in the back? Yes.
Yep. Good evening. My name is Carrie Rossi. I am the owner of 511 East Fifth Street. I was sent a notification here about the business that is behind my property wanting to expand their playground space into the public alley. My property currently backs up to the public alley, and I have had alley access the whole time I've owned this property. It's longstanding alley access. After speaking to the owner of this property, it sounds like this playground, which is enclosed by a six-foot-tall privacy fence, would encroach on my alley access. I ask that the building commission, if that's the right department, consider not removing the access I currently enjoy. I do have a second concern about this same proposal. I can't say if it was the same business there, but in the same location, enough, maybe another business, built a platform on my property in order to hold their garbage cans. So I ask that, whatever they're going to build in that location, that it respect the property lines, because they haven't in the past. And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak at public comment tonight? Yes, sir.
How are y'all doing? My name is Mark Johnston. I'm president of Ajax Paving Industries. I used to be a former resident of Royal Oak. Both my daughters graduated, one graduated from Kimball in 2004, my youngest graduated was the first graduating class of Royal Oak High School in 2007. I live at 1020 Green Tree Bloomfield Hills. So I'm president of Ajax Paving Industries. We've done a lot of work here in the city of Royal Oak over the years. We're the largest concrete paver in the state of Michigan, the third-largest asphalt paver in Michigan, second-largest in, first or second-largest depending here in southeastern Michigan. I'm here to talk about or protest your ordinance. You have a great engineer back there at Holly, and she does a fantastic job with all your We've been on both sides of this. Ann Arbor, your city here, Royal Oak, and Canton Township have similar ordinances that I feel is just not fair whatsoever. We've been on the good side. Ann Arbor, last year, two years ago, we were third bidder. We got the job for about 500 grand more. The only reason was because the other bidders, our two bidders, had lower points, or we had higher points. We used the same civil contractor. The civil contractor was low, wasn't awarded the job because of the point-scoring system. MDOT, the counties, majority of cities do not use anything like this. They prequalify their contractors. The waste of taxpayers' money here, I think, is very, very bad. $500,000 goes a long ways in city streets. We're facing the state of Michigan, the cities, counties we all live in, we're facing a huge funding crisis on transportation, infrastructure issues. Not only is Ajax protesting this, but MIDA, which is the Michigan Infrastructure Transportation Association, that represents a supermajority of all the road, bridge, sewer, water, and civil contractors in Michigan, union and non-union contractors. Like I said, the bidders on this, I know Vertertery, who you're, wanted the job too, Major and FDM, we work with all three of them. They're all fine contractors. It's not about the contractors, it's about your policies. MIDA, along with about 99% of the contractors that belong in the state of Michigan to it, vehemently disagrees with the ordinance as stated in the letter to the mayor from MIDA. There is no tangible benefit to the taxpayers of Royal Oak. In fact, your ordinance is making the taxpayers pay over $500,000 more to do this particular contract without any benefit. This is not good public policy or good stewards of the taxpayers' money in the city of Royal Oak. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, who's next? Yes, sir.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. My name is Jeremiah Leva, and I am a city resident living at 3230 Prairie Avenue here in Royal Oak. I am also the director of engineering for the Michigan Infrastructure and Transportation Association, or MIDA. You may recall from previous correspondence that MIDA is the statewide representative for Michigan's heavy construction industry. Sorry, I'm out of breath. As a city resident, I am discouraged by your decision to award one of our 2024 water main improvement projects, specifically contract cap 2410, to the third-low bidder rather than to the low bidder for an additional cost of $500,000. I understand that this decision results from a best value policy prescribing ordinance number 2022-07, which includes a subjective post-bid ranking process. This process neither guarantees nor assures us taxpayers of any higher level of quality or timeliness in the construction of that project. MIDA is opposed to any public owner's subjective post-bid scoring or ranking that manipulates the order of the bidders regarding who will be awarded a contract, as we believe these practices and procedures are ultimately anti-competitive. We believe that by adopting and employing bidding and award practices that are subjective and anti-competitive, our city will establish boundaries around our community such that the pool of interested and qualified contractors will shrink, the number of competitive bids we receive on future projects will decrease, and we will pay more than our neighboring communities for similar types of projects. I can assure you, with this latest contract announcement, the word about Royal Oak is already spreading throughout the contracting community in Michigan. Contractors have been put on notice that even if their bidding efforts put them $0.5 million below their competitor in Royal Oak, those efforts are little more than a gamble. As a city resident, I am hopeful you will reconsider your decision on the award of contract cap 2410, and that you will award it to the low, responsive, and responsible bidder. You could then use that extra $500,000 you were going to spend on that project to address many of the other infrastructure needs our city has. MIDA again encourages you to rethink and rescind ordinance number 2022-07 as written, that you instead develop and implement a pre-bid, pre-qualification process that can incorporate some of the desired best value criteria, and that you conduct your analysis of those submitted bid proposals in a consistent, fair, and non-subjective manner, and that you award all of your projects to the lowest, responsive, and responsible bidder. Thank you for the opportunity to make these comments.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
My name's Eric Flessland, that's spelled F-I-N-K-L-E-S-S-L-A-N-D, and I'm a resident of Groseal. I'm here to speak on behalf of FDM Contracting. Preface my comments with this principle that you should keep in mind, which I'll come back to at the end of my comments. The city has authority to correct results of an error in the bid process when the city is responsible for that error. The citation for that authority is in the bid protest letter that was emailed to each of you and then handed out to you at the beginning of the meeting tonight. In 2013 was the first time when the city began to bid projects under the responsible bidding ordinance. FDM was not familiar with it, asked a lot of questions, got direction from the engineering division, and was a successful bidder. Under the ordinance, then, they are excused from submitting Form A, which is a pre-qualification for bidding. 2024 comes up, they identify projects they want to bid on, but they're still confused by the instructions to bidders, so they ask the engineering division questions like they did the year before. The question was, do I need to submit Form A, Form B, and the ranking criteria on these contracts, or is the data that I submitted last year sufficient? The engineering division responded, you need only submit Form B. The same person that they were in communication with in 2013 also responded, that's twice, that says, you're only required to submit Form B. And relying on that advice, FDM submitted Form B. And they, as a result, were scored low. When they asked, why are we being scored so low, they said, the response came back, you didn't submit the ranking criteria that you're encouraged to submit in the bid documents. It's not required, it's encouraged. So after following the engineering division's directions, they're being penalized because they didn't submit the data. The problem is this, it's a misleading response. Had the engineering division said, you're required to submit Form B, and you're encouraged to submit the ranking criteria, then they would have done so. They were told only B, that's what they did. Now, how do we fix that? The city has caused this situation through this misleading information. The city has the authority to correct its mistake. We're not asking to submit data after the bids are open because that'd be unfair to the other bidders. You have the ranking criteria from 2023 and can look at that so that everybody is on the same playing field. Thank you.
Thank you. Yep, in the front.
Hi, my name is Paul Hurley. I'm a local resident a few streets down the road, and I also wanted to protest the same ordinance that the past few speakers have spoken on. I just wanted to state how proud I was to... I just wanted to state how proud I was to move down to Royal Oak within the last six months and really wanted to get involved in similar matters to this. And being in the bonding industry, this was my first experience seeing something like this in Royal Oak. I wanted to address with a few questions, and I'm now learning, in my first time speaking here, that there are no answers to response to this, but I'd really love to see a solution provided to what was, I'm sure, originally presented as a formidable solution, now has obvious flaws that are preventing capable contractors from performing projects in the best interest of the citizens. To me, moving down to an area with higher taxes and higher ordinance codes and different preferences than that, I expected a higher standard from what we would see in the commissioners. And to me, a customer that has performed 32 projects successfully in this city in the past is clearly not the objective of how this ordinance was, and this point system was originally presented to intend. So I would love for the city of Royal Oak to reconsider how this project was awarded and act in the best interest of the citizens of Royal Oak that are paying the taxpayer dollars to reward this project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hurley. All right, anybody else wish to speak tonight at public comment? Going once, going twice? All right, we're going to close public comment and bring the meeting back to this side of the table. And that brings us to item seven, which is the consent agenda. Does anyone wish to pull anything off the consent agenda? Nobody wishes to pull anything off the consent agenda? Oh, Commissioner Douglas, sorry.
I'm going to move approval.
Are you going to move approval? Okay, we have a motion to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Herzog. Discussion?
I'll just add, I appreciate the feedback tonight. For those of you who weren't with us when we went over the responsible contracting ordinance, we had a lot of conversation about it. It's a good ordinance, and this commission's opinion, certainly, there's always opportunities to improve over time, and we're grateful for your feedback. But the basis of it, how it's rooted, the legality of it, all of that, is something we talked about in great detail and feel it's going to result in the best value for Royal Oak taxpayers in the long run. And so, you know, happy to always discuss with any of you if you wish to talk about it, but if you go back and look at the meeting minutes and you look at some of the research we did and things of that nature, you know, we really put a value-based approach on it. And, you know, the outcomes may not be accepted by everyone, but for this commission, you know, putting those ground rules out there was important to us and living up to finding the best value for our taxpayers. So with that, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, motion passes.
All right, this brings us to item eight, which is proposed amendment to Royal Oak Code of Ordinances, amend Chapter 82 Historic Preservation to Establish Vincetta Bridges, Historic District First Reading. I imagine, Mr. Grotowski, this one will kick off with you, sir.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Commission. On the agenda for your consideration is a proposed amendment to the Code of Ordinances that would establish a new historic district in the city regarding the Vincetta Bridges and the city-owned property as described in my memo and in the very thorough final report of the Historic District Study Commission, which is the basis for the request for the ordinance this evening. If you approve the ordinance, well, you have several options with regard to what you can approve or not approve this evening. Again, lay those out in my letter, but if you desire to approve the ordinance, we have a suggested resolution for that. I don't think I see anybody here on behalf of the Historic District, oh, I'm sorry, Study Committee, and I would certainly suggest they have an opportunity to present anything they want to present regarding this possible designation.
Okay. What we'll do first, commissioners, is we'll just start with any quick, basic questions from Mr. Grotowski from a legal point of view, and then if our members would like to come up and talk about this, that would be great. Are you guys prepared to make any? Okay, good. I just don't, I don't always know if people want to present or not, and I don't want to, you know, force you on it. Any questions for Mr. Grotowski out of the gate? Okay, all right, come on up.
I'm Patrick Andrews, so I'm a 14-year resident of Royal Oak. I've been on the Royal Oak Historic District Study Committee for, going on five years now, and then on the Historical Commission for over seven, maybe going on eight years now. And we've been working, and again, I appreciate you all taking the time to review the report that I believe Carol provided to you, but I also really appreciate, you know, when you do designate a historic district in the city or in any area, it takes the permission of the property owner, which in this particular case is the city. So I appreciate you all giving us the opportunity to study this particular section of the Vincetta for its historic merit. This has been, going on two years in the making now, put together a very thorough report. We even went out and had a field trip and dug up around the bridge to try to find an exact year, maybe when they were built, and surprisingly enough, the bridge that we did dig up, you could still see light, right? It still functions as a bridge, right? And they're, they're in rough shape, you know, and we'll admit to that, but this historic designation will help us with grants, will help us with some restoration, and also preserve a very unique part of the city, which we feel is important to differentiate ourselves from other inner suburbs or just any other suburbs in Detroit. So I don't know if you guys had a chance to take a look at the report, but I would definitely welcome any questions or concerns that you might have. We're prepared to answer anything.
Questions? It's a quiet crowd tonight. No, I think great work, by the way, because it's something really unique and a little bit different, and I think you hit the nail on the head, especially the Vincetta neighborhood is unique in terms of, we'll say, this geography in southeast Michigan, but unique to Royal Oak as well, and has a storied history. And when we talk about history, we often have to visualize and characterize with things that we can touch and feel, and I think this is a really noble effort here and grateful for the work of the Historic Commission to go through and do the heavy lifting. Really, really cool. That's my 10,000-foot comment before any details. Any questions, comments? None? Okay. Any questions or comments for us?
No, I understand this is going to be the first reading, and then we'll have a second reading, and we're very excited to move forward with this great piece of preservation in the city, so I appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay. Commissioner Collo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I have a couple of questions for the staff. And I'm not sure for Sanyou, for Mr. Grotowski, but so I guess the first question is, you know, these bridges are 100-some years old. I think we all drive under a little by, kind of love a mile, and we see, like, it is crumbling and about to fall on us at any given time. What, you know, the bridges are clearly in poor shape. I think we all recognize that. These, the bridges on Vincetta are crumbling also. So I guess what is the process of, is it 10 here to save this, this exact concrete, these exact bridges? Are we rebuilding them? Would we, if we do and somehow get somebody to do it, would we rebuild it in the same form? Because I'm not, and I don't know how you save a 100-year-old bridge.
Mr. Grotowski.
If I may start that conversation, I appreciate a member coming back up to maybe further answer that question. I think the initial step is if it's designated as historic, then it would open doors for the Historic Study Committee or the HDC, the commission, to apply for grants to probably study the viability of restoration and that type of thing, and then if they're able to obtain grant funding, explore options they may have with regard to either restoration or saving what's there or replacing what's there. And I'm not trying to speak for either of the committees, but at least the designation opens the door for potential applications for, for grants that they can then use. And then I think they probably would supplement that at some point. But to further answer your question, I don't believe there's any, been any engineering studies or anything to this point that would give us any idea whatsoever, the viability of whether or not they can be saved or rehabilitated or, or possibly replaced.
Yeah, to your point, I believe it's Mayfield Bridge, somebody had hit earlier in the, maybe last fall, and a piece of it had crumbled over, right? And that was because somebody hit it, right? It wasn't because it deteriorated. But exactly going along with what you said, this will give us the opportunity to, I mean, we've put a lot of research into it, we have a lot of passionate folks here that are looking and know exactly how to put this thing together, right? So we could easily put together a plan between the HDC, other members of city, and a lot, even the residents, right? They want to see these preserved. So to gather support, to put together a plan, to restore them back to the way they were, this is the first step towards that. And yes, of course, if there was something where it did, right, for example, we'll go back to the Mayfield Bridge, to repair that, it goes back to the Historic District Commission. They say, yes, this exactly was the intent of this bridge, this is the way it should look. We get an approval for that, and then we can go out and have it repaired.
So yeah, I guess my question comes along the lines of, let's say, you know, the bridge is just not viable, it's not, it's not something that you repair. We could still replace it with like styling? You know, because at some point, those bridges might have to just come down, right? Like, that's a possibility.
You're saying if it just falls apart, you go and you dig it out and it just collapses, then you would replace it with a replica that would be identical to the original?
Correct. Okay, and that's within the guidelines, is that we could replace with a replica, not, because, you know, I mean, I've talked to the engineer down here about, she's also passionate about, you know, she likes the bridges, she thinks they're cool, she, I think we all recognize, like, it is a really cool feature in Vincetta.
Commissioner Collo will cross that bridge when it comes. All right, okay.
Sorry. It's too easy.
I've got two more dad jokes left, two more.
You can score.
Yeah, you know, we definitely want to have it. We want it, have it put together so it has the same feeling maybe five years ago when it's replaced as it did 40 years ago. You know, that's, that's really what the, that would be the purpose of that, of this.
Okay. And then, so my second question then comes up to the green space, so, you know, when the neighborhood was originally plotted, this was a river, clearly by the bridges. So then we have this green space, I know we've written a lot of carve-outs in here. I guess what's the, does it make sense to do the green space, much like when we did the farmer's market, it was a building and the lots, we said, no, we're going to leave the lots as they are, we're going to do the building. Nothing could ever be built on this green space, right? It's a, it's a median, it's not building anything there. Does this impede staff's ability, fix a dead tree, plant a new one, repair a sidewalk, install a new water main? So I guess, if our attorney wants to start, we can go from there, but I just want to make sure that the green space doesn't limit what we might need to do in the space.
If I may, Mr. Mayor. So in the ordinance, we did, we had this discussion with staff, and that was the same concern that many different city department heads had, because there are multiple different utilities under that green space. There's a 30-inch transmission main for Saquon, several county sewers, there's parts of the city's 8-inch water main, and multiple storm sewer crossings that all run under that green space. So what our office did was suggest a resolution or an ordinance that would still designate the area as historic, including the green space, but carve out an exception that if a utility owner needed to go in and repair or replace the utility, they wouldn't need to obtain a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic District Commission. So to answer your question, the ordinance as presented this evening carves out an exception that would allow the city to replace, repair those utilities, including sidewalks and the other elements that you mentioned, Commissioner Collo.
Okay, because I do see routine maintenance of trees, but what if we want to put in a new tree? Like, add, you know, we're expanding the canopy if we want. Routine maintenance, does that include adding features to it?
Yes.
Okay. Awesome.
So yeah, if it was a new, right, we would, if there's a dead tree, you know, to use your example, or if there's a water main that breaks, you know, we're not going to have to go to the HDC to get approval to dig it out, right? It would be the same as like if the farmer's market was on fire, right? We're not going to have to get approval to take down a wall to fight the fire. But we would ask that when the plant does come back to restore the space that was worked on, that that goes to the HDC to make sure we have native trees, plants, and it was to the intention of how that neighborhood was originally designed and laid out.
It was originally designed with a river.
No, well, the river, they covered it back way in the 20s, right? So that was, at that time, then they started, that neighborhood decided to, you know, really started to, you know, to expand.
Commissioner Douglas?
That was my question. When, when was the river covered over?
It was in the 20s, not the exact year here, but it's been quite a while since it's been covered over there. There are some photos we have in the report that show, you know, kind of what it looked like, but I don't remember the exact year off the top of my head of when it was covered, but yeah.
Okay, that's good, thank you.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy.
I'm just going to say that we're missing Commissioner Purush right now, because she would be telling us the history, and this is also her area, so looking for her wisdom, and it's, it's not here at the table, which is sad.
Yeah.
And she was actually, after you graciously allowed us to study this property, she came to our first meeting and provided some insight and some, some information on her property that she lived nearby, so, yeah. Sad that she's not here to see this.
She would have loved it. Commissioner Collo.
So I just got to say, as we get the discussion going, you know, I love the idea of the bridges, that sounds like, you know, it sounds great. I think it's great to keep those and make sure they're preserved. I'm a little hesitant on the green space, only because we have other boulevards within the city. You know, how do we tell Forest Street, you know, Mountford, and all these other boulevards that theirs isn't a historic designated spot, because the neighborhood was also designed around that? So I guess I'm a little hesitant on the green space, but very open to the bridges, and namely just for equity throughout the city and the other boulevards, unless we would do them all. I mean, if you want to do them all, we'll talk about that, but I just wonder if, you know, this is, I think, the third time this has been talked about, right, the 90s and 2000s, this has also talked about the city commission. So I just wonder if the green space is, you know, nothing will ever happen there, just what happens if we designate that green space versus all the other ones in the city?
No.
Commissioner Douglas?
So it would have to be our group, right? And you have to approve the fact that you even allow us to study that particular green space, as you mentioned, let's say, in the other part of Vincetta, right, from Crooks to Maine, right, which I live on. And I'll tell you, I don't think that, I mean, yes, I want to have it preserved exactly how the way it is and improved upon, but this particular green space goes back to the original design and plat of the entire subdivision, right? It was, it was part of the Garden Cities, right, to make it curved roads and, you know, open spaces, that feeling of the 20s. It was allowing people to come from, you know, a grid-like system in, let's say, the city of Detroit, to move out into an area. So that's why we want to preserve that particular green space, to make it have that same feeling of, you know, of that era.
But yeah, I'm not, I don't, excuse me, I don't see that the green space is at risk here. I mean, I don't think that there's a chance that we're going to develop, put buildings on it, or do anything to it but what it is. If we're still a river, I mean, really, the bridges are there because it was a river. And to me, once you take the river out of the equation, you kind of remove the authenticity of the, of the historic designation. I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Collo that, you know, let's save the bridges. We will save the, the green space, but I don't know that it requires historic designation to protect. Just my opinion.
Anybody else? Commissioner Macy?
So can we ask, I know I was putting you very much on the spot, but if we remove the green space from this, how does, how did you, how would you feel about that? Do you feel like we're taking apart a critical piece of it, or not?
No, it's a great question. So the, when we, so the way this works, right? So we go and we study this area, and we have our, a group of folks that are volunteer, that are in various backgrounds in history, architects. We put together a report, and then it's presented to the State Historic Preservation Office. It was presented back last September, right? So then they approve it of the report as it is, and then it comes to the city commission to put it into ordinance, right? So if we have to remove that green space, which, some of the comments from the State Historic Preservation Office already stated that they wanted more space even included in this historic preservation. So number one, we would have to reconfigure this report and present it with them, and hopefully they'll approve it with the reduced green space. And there's no guaranteeing that. I don't, I would like to hear what specifically, you know, what concerns might be of the green space, other than the fact, I know things happen, but, you know, I think there's a lot of easy ways around it and to rectify any problems or issues that might arise from having to alter that green space. We're just looking to have, we don't want to have a turn lane in it in the future. We don't want to have, like, a bike path going through, which actually I thought would be kind of cool, but we don't want to have that, right? We want to keep it the same kind of feeling as it is today with the bridges as it is.
So then, oh, you have another question, follow-up? Okay. So then, I mean, I think it really comes down to the green space of, and I get the deductive points that Commissioner Collo and Commissioner Douglas are making. My instinct tells me out of the gate, I don't have a lot of concerns that, you know, green space is going to change, because we're not going to pave it. You make an interesting point about a bike path, or, you know, maybe that's not appropriate, that the planting vegetation, like you said, you know, garden of the 20s, like that theme, you know what I mean? You know, just having grass there that can be mowed versus, you know, a more, what I could predict down the road is the neighbors coming together and saying, hey, we want to use that space to have a more, either natural, like open area wildflowers, grasses or whatever, or a more, you know, maintained garden there of natural, or native species, whatever it may be, but more groomed and, you know, organized. And would those options, based on your understanding, be prohibited? I don't, I don't see the neighbors coming together and saying, let's pave it and turn it into a parking lot. But I could see down the road, 50 years from now, 20 years from now, 100 years from, decisions we make last a long time, saying, you know what, let's all, you know, city came into some money, we came into, let's, let's take those medians and turn them into gardens, you know, something that are enjoyable, you can walk through and enjoy. Or we want to plant, make them, you know, more wooded, plant more trees or whatever to improve the aesthetic of the neighborhood. Are those, in your mind, based on what was sent to the state of Michigan, prohibited?
No, not at all. You know, I, so that's a great question, it's a great example. If there were a group of neighbors, or the city decided they wanted to build a bioswale or something, or plant more trees, or plant a wildflower garden, again, that could go back to our HDC. It's just, it's a very quick process. They would review what the plans were, and they'd say, yes, this is, this is great, this has worked, these are native flowers to Michigan. You know, if you wanted to plant some, you know, sable palms in there, obviously, I'm joking, maybe with a.
Well, they 70-degree days, maybe it's possible.
Yeah, that obviously would be something that's not appropriate, but yeah, we're all for, you know, taking a look at some different ideas.
Because I don't see the original plan where it was like, okay, we have to have six white pines in this pattern, separated by 10 feet. It's more like, okay, this is going to be natural.
Correct, yeah. That, I think, I can't speak for the HDC. Patrick Schrock is here tonight, but, you know, we did discuss that, and it's something you would just present to the group. And, you know, again, unless it's something completely objectionable, I can foresee a reason why they wouldn't approve that.
Commissioner Macy?
My inclination, given the feedback about that they already were worried about this perhaps being too small of a spot, that if we wanted to do something about these bridges, then reducing that down, I don't, I guess I'm in the same spot. I don't, I don't see the argument strong enough to say, send it back and start over because we think that there's some danger to the green space. I don't, I don't foresee it, I don't think. So that's, that's where I'm headed.
Good. Commissioner Collo?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can I actually ask the question about that, send it back and start over? Because when we did the farmer's market lot, it was at the table that we changed it. It came to the table with the recommendation of both the farmer's market and the lot. And we changed it as we were writing the ordinance at the table to be the farmer's market only. In fact, it didn't have to go back. We didn't do a second report. We just modified what the ordinance was, and it was, it was based on what we put into the law that night. So I guess, can we get some context of where this goes back? If the attorney has an idea here?
Thank you. Certainly you have the option, if you wanted to have it explored, to send it back and have them look at it for any specific questions or issues you may have. But I also believe the law allows you to adopt an ordinance tonight, and right now, as the ordinance is presented to you, it includes the green space. But if you wanted to adjust that green space, you have the authority to adjust the ordinance tonight, or at, between now and second reading, or have another first reading after that revision is made. So I think Commissioner Collo is correct. You have the authority, under my reading, of the state law that would allow you to adopt any ordinance that you see fit. But it doesn't prevent you, if you want additional information or study to be conducted, to send it back if you wanted. And I think what I was hearing is, with the state process lessening the green space where they want more, might be problematic for them from a perspective of maybe grants, those types of things, possibly. But you certainly can, I think Commissioner Collo is absolutely right. So if that's the direction, we could, you have two options, you know, adopt the ordinance with any proposed amendments, and we give you that amendment between first, and you'll have the amendment at second reading with any revisions, or as is, or you could send it back if you wanted.
And Mr. Garchowski, just to be clear, it's all done by ordinance here at this commission or a future commission, so.
Correct.
In the event that we wanted to make a drastic change 12 years from now because of whatever we can't predict, you know what I mean? Then I would guess, venture to say, if laws are based in logic, which they aren't always, but I would see these ones would be based in logic, that any benefit, real benefit that the city would have received, let's say we got grant money of $200,000 to fix the bridges. And, you know, what we'd be risking is, if we change that ordinance moving forward, we might have to, you know, repay that money back, or whatever benefit we got from the way, if we approved it tonight, and then we change it 12 years from now, there might be, you know, hey, you got something on a, you got some sort of benefit as a city based on this condition, and now that condition changed, you know, we want, and that could be part of our calculus, whether or not to change something, if it makes sense or not. But we're not handcuffed forever. This isn't, you know, we can divorce ourselves down the road through an ordinance change and undesignate the grass area, so long as any benefit is also addressed as well over that period.
If I may?
Yeah.
A little more complicated than that. It's the reverse process of undesignating a designated historic district. So you basically, there's a certain statutory process they have to follow when they study and we designate a historic district. To undo that, we basically have to go in reverse process to do that. So actually, it's not quite as easy as just doing an ordinance, because there has to be a study.
Go back to the state.
It has to essentially lose its, there's four criteria, I think, under state law for designating historic districts, so that would have to be destroyed. Let's say a historic monument completely got destroyed by a natural act, then that would be a reason to go back and undesignate it. But it does have to go through the same process again, prior to this commission, considering that ordinance. So it's a little more complicated. Yes, you can consider that, but it does have to go through the steps and come, go through the planning commission again, and go through the entire process kind of backwards.
And that would be, in the event that there is a dramatic change to what we would want to do with the green part. But if we predict, and we believe that we're not going to have any dramatic changes, then that should be a relatively low risk. But there is a process to unwind it. There is a divorcing process that we can, if it makes sense. Like, oh, we can't, you know, you have to, you know, if we put a new pavement in, and it requires something like to go in and, like you said, bioswales, or, you know, a drain pan with permeable layer of pavement along the edge, and it requires us to do something like shave six inches off, you know, or whatever, to get this huge benefit, you know, you guys would look at it, and not putting words in your mouth, but say, yeah, that's probably plus or minus six inches, probably within the idea of what this is, considering, you know, we have a street, we have a natural area, blah, blah, blah. If it's taking 12 feet, then that's a different discussion, but, I mean, I can't foresee why in a neighborhood, like, if this were downtown Royal Oak, I'd be like, ah, you know, things are always changing, you know, maybe we want to reconfigure the green space for contemporary times and do some cool things. I don't see this neighborhood changing in character. It hasn't changed in 100 years, really. I don't see it changing too much.
In those particular circumstances you mentioned, Mr. Mayor, the process would be to apply for a certificate of appropriateness through the HDC. They would explore that with the city, of course, because we're the owners, and then come up with some sort of way to figure that out for a certificate of appropriateness. That's not included in the ordinance as one of the exceptions. So the adding of, like, decorative gardens or other planting features would be subject to the certificate of appropriateness.
Okay.
But all said and done, I mean, their bottom line is they're looking at preserving the historic nature, and I'm assuming any development would incorporate that into any type of consideration moving forward.
Commissioner Douglas?
Didn't we just put sidewalks there? Or am I?
Yes, there are. There's a sidewalk that crosses, been set up. And ironically enough, and I can't remember specifically which street, which bridge that's near, but just to give you an example, again, I can't speak for our group or other folks in the HDC 12 years from now, as you use your example, but folks in our group have all thought that was a great idea to have a crosswalk across the street, right? And not have people crossing at the bridge. So, you know.
The bridge is falling apart, right?
The bridge is falling apart. But anyway, so, but yeah, no, that's, that would be something that we were excited to see, right? It makes it walkable, where you can walk across that particular part of the median. It's just that, in this case, after this is designated, again, for as long as you guys put in, you know, the time and effort it takes to plan these things and to put together in your budget, and then, hey, we're going to do this sidewalk, you know, really, it's just a short little blip of time to go to the HDC, say, hey, we're going to put a sidewalk here, it's going to make the neighborhood more walkable, which we all love, and I walk all through there all the time myself. And that's, that's really would be the only change. Let's say, you know, it's a great example of something that had changed recently in the last year or so, if that happens, you know, two, three years from now, we talk to Mr. Schrock's group, and then they go through and take a look at it, and they say, yeah, this, you know, it's, this space should be enjoyed, and we can put a crosswalk, you know, put a sidewalk there.
I guess my question would be, does the addition of those sidewalks after the state HDC has considered it, would that affect their opinion of the green space? Because now it has sidewalks where there weren't any before.
I'm not sure exactly when those.
Should we just not tell them?
Right. I'm not sure, the timing of all that, and when they approve it, I'm not sure of.
So then I have a second question. So if, if a historically designated house burns down and is rebuilt with comparable materials and appearance and so forth, is it still a historic home? And I would ask that, I ask that question rhetorically, because I ask of the bridges, if we completely replace and rebuild them, are they still historic?
That would be a question for Patrick. Do you have, would you have any input on that?
It's a good question. I guess it depends on, you say a completely, the house totally burns down, or it's, or reconstruction? Oh, sorry. So are you saying that the house completely burns down?
Yeah, if you, at what point, when you're replacing a historic structure, is it no longer historic?
So I think if the house were to totally burn down and it's gone, then we petition that to unmake, dehistoric, unhistoric the structure. I'm not sure how it relates to the bridges, and if they'd be completely rebuilt from ground, from the bottom up, or just repaired, so, but.
I mean, I.
It's a good question, I just don't have a good answer.
Okay.
But if I may, an earlier question you had about planting, I don't think that's going to affect the historical nature of it, if you, if someone were to come plant trees or plants, because that could change over the years. I mean, if we, if they were removed, it doesn't take away from the character of it, so. And another thing, the HDC, Historic District Commission, we're not really here to micromanage or, you know, to something to its historical nature, so.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm concerned here that we designate this, and then your funding sources say, well, you know, if you're completely rebuilding these bridges, then they're no longer the historic bridges, so you're not eligible for funding, and there we are with bridges in disrepair. So I'm speculating here, but it seems to, it might be, it might be something we want to research before a second reading, let us say that.
So we want to know exactly, at what point will the bridges themselves, the structures no longer be considered historic? Is that, is that a fair question? Okay.
Or if they're designated historic and you have to totally rebuild them, what is that litmus test to say that, you know, they're no longer historic now because you did this and you have a, you know, an issue? You know, my guess would be is that there's some provisions out there, you know, that one, if it's one out of seven bridges, okay, what does that mean? Because it's an area, it's a geography. And then the other one I would look at, I know of, like, in the state of Michigan, state sites that are historically designated that are completely rebuilt, like Michelin McNaught, you know what I mean? But then, once they're built and they've been reconstructed, they still have to repair them to, you know, historic.
Authentically.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah. That's a great question, and I don't know at what percentage it is it would be, it would be different, you know? So yeah, we'll definitely do some research on that.
Okay. I've got more.
And just to kind of further that conversation, if it's at all helpful, it's, even though the structure may be destroyed or lost, it's still within the boundaries of the historic district. So there are likely rules, regulations about that that I'm unfamiliar with, that maybe the HDC folks might be a little more familiar with as far as, so that might be a starting point to look at in the research, and I'll try to help with that if I can. But it's still in the historic district designated, so certificate of appropriateness would still be appropriate, pardon the pun.
No, no.
Not a dad joke. And so I think in the practical sense, it would come before the HDC for determination on a rebuild to fit within that historic district still. But, you know, it doesn't necessarily answer your question that it's no longer historic because it's brand new, but at the same time, it's still within that district and still has to comply with all those laws or the regulations, so.
Yeah, my question was more about funding, grants and so forth.
I'm not sure how that works. Anybody else? All right. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
We might call you back up again, we'll see if there's any genius that pops into any of our brains in the next minutes. But we have a proposal in front of us, an ordinance on first reading in front of us. Anyone wish to make a motion? Commissioner Macy? Or Commissioner Collo? I don't know what's happening, a lot of hands and face gestures.
I would move it as is, but I was expecting a different motion from down there, so I don't know.
See where it goes.
All right, I'll move as is.
We've got a motion by Commissioner Macy, is there a second by Commissioner Collo? All right, discussion. Mr. Collo?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. So I want to start by thanking the committee. Attorney Collo is actually one of my favorite committees to watch on TV all the time and visit when I first became commissioner. visit when I first became commissioner. They do a lot of good work in town and, you know, preserving historic structures in the city is, is quite important. You know, my, my only, my big issues tonight were, and I kind of feel like where the table's going, so I'll definitely jump on board here, but my issues were equality with the rest of the city and looking at the other boulevards in town and why those ones aren't historic but this one is. There's, especially in the northern part of town, there's some very big, beautiful roads that have these same large green spaces in front of them. So I, my only, you know, my continued reservation here is that we're doing this one and now why not the other ones? And this is one and, you know, I have some very nice homes around it, too. So I, I just, I worry that we're not doing other ones that, you know, where they could also be using the same argument to make all those historic. So that, that is the basis of my hesitation when I first talked about this. And I could still be on the side of only doing the bridges because I, the bridges definitely, I think we all agree, the bridges are pretty cool. They should be around forever. The green spaces, I just, I worry about that equity throughout the rest of the city.
I'll just respond real quick. I think that's a good point, a very good question and love to have it looked at. My, my inclination tells me is that, one, the bridges are a big part of this, which are driving it. Two, the design of the neighborhood, the green space was so fundamental to the elements of space within that neighborhood, whereas, and not to knock, like even the ones in my neighborhood area and whatnot, they're more like the grid-like. I don't want to say they're a dime a dozen, but where they designed more functionally versus designed out of a, you know, for a historic nature. Like we have a lot of old homes in Royal Oak, but they don't always qualify for historical significance. It's the ones that have unique, you know, whatever, and maybe that's partly driving it, but I think it's a good question to say anytime that we can protect green space in this city, which I think is a little bit what Commissioner Kolo was hinting at, it's not a bad idea. Although we shouldn't stretch a tool, you know? We use the right tool for the right situation, but it's a good point. Was it Commissioner Herzog or Commissioner Cheesem? I know him always. Okay. Good? All right. Well, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, we got a little bit of homework between now and second reading, but I don't think any of it's insurmountable. Appreciate your time and effort on everything you guys do. It's not easy, but it really does, you know, the work matters and it lasts for generations. So this town's cool for a lot of reasons and we got to protect what's cool about it and, and you guys are a big part of that, so thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
All right, this brings us to item nine, which is the Veterans Events Committee recommendation addition to the Royal Oak War Memorial. I see Ms. Davids here. Ms. Davids?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. I'm here. Sergeant Ryan Spangler is the ex officio, but he could not be here tonight, so I'm just hitting for him. I'm also joined by Arbor LaClave, who is a member of the Veterans Event Committee. So if you have any questions for Arbor, like he's coming up right now. He had to run back to his store and lock it up and then make it back. So anyways, the Veterans Event Committee met in February and they voted to make a recommendation to the city commission to add an additional monument to the Royal Oak Veterans War Memorial. I think a lot of people think the memorial are the three large obelisks, but actually the memorial encompasses a number of monuments and this would be a new one. It would be a 24 by 30 inch engraved granite plaque and it would be to recognize those who lost their lives to exposure to toxic chemicals, burn pits, Agent Orange and the like. The wording on the monument would be consistent with the bipartisan Promise to Address Comprehensive Toxics Act, which was signed into law by President Biden in 2022. And it recognizes that veterans across all generations have been impacted by toxic exposure during their, during their service to our country. The monument would simply read, "In memory of the men and women who served in the military and later died as a result of their service. We honor and remember their service." That wording is identical to the wording that's part of the Vietnam Memorial in Washington, DC. I think a lot of people think that, kind of like ours, they think the Vietnam Memorial is just the wall, but the Vietnam Memorial is the wall, two statues and this, what they call the memory plaque. The cost to create the plaque is $2,500. Mr. LaClave has been working with the DDA to see if they would cover the cost of that, so there's no request for money. We, the Veterans Event Committee feels that this plaque is in line with our goals as a city and that is to show gratitude and respect for the sacrifices made by those who served in the service to our country. And also it sends, it's an important educational message and kind of talks about civic responsibility and the importance of caring for others. So with that, if you have any questions.
Ditto. Mr. LaClave, anything to add?
I mean, for the most part, it's kind of, well, she explained everything that really needs to be explained, but it is the PACT Act. It is registered, mandated, everything by the VA, so we're kind of just following that standard. There's been one, two folks who've come to the board asking for Royal Oak citizens who passed away to be added to the memorial, technically because of the VA standard that they can't be added, because they didn't die in service. So the PACT Act addresses that. This is the best way that we can address that. So, and the DDA has already been approved for the funding of it, so it's pretty much just needs you guys A-OK to put it in place.
Questions? I'll just add, thank you. Thank you for serving on the Veterans Event Committee. Thank you for having to serve with Mr. Wondoff. I know that's a tall order. And the biggest challenge of your life that you've had to face and you persevered, but in all seriousness, the work that you're, you're doing in that committee, all of you, is, is really important and I believe this is something that has always sort of personally gnawed away at me. I've spent several Memorial Day, made, made comments on Memorial Day several times and looking at those names is heartbreaking, but we know even through your work and the, and the Veterans Events Committee work with Mr. London and everybody else with the Ruck March 20, or the 22, Ruck March, we know that, you know, the casualties of war go beyond the battlefield and it's important that we have recognition of that, both in terms of who we are, what we say, but what we see. And I think this is something that will remind everybody, especially in this park, that the wounds of battle get carried home here.
Yes, they do.
And, you know, for, for a number of honorable people leads to tragedy. And I think this is a, a somber reminder and a heavy reminder to all of us and hopefully it will not only respect those that gave the most, but will also affect those passerby's walking in our park observing the memorial to think deeper about the sacrifice that so many have made. And so this is a really noble and important thing and we're grateful for you and your team. Any else? Okay, what's the, maybe I do have a question. What I mean, the, what's the timeline and dedication going to look like and?
So we're so lucky and so grateful to have Cloverstone located right here in Royal Oak. They're the ones that engraved the, the most recent name that we added on one of the benches for Iraqi freedom. They can do it just as soon as the weather gets nice, which is hopefully not far away, and we are hoping to unveil it on Memorial Day.
Very good. Perfect. Okay. We already have the stand and everything, right? We already have the stand and everything, we literally just.
Yeah, yeah. I think we're, yeah.
Yeah. Good. Well, if there's anything throughout the process you need, you know, we're just one call away.
Absolutely.
All right, Commissioner Kolo.
One big thing they need is a resolution. So I move the resolution as presented.
All right, we have a motion by Commissioner Kolo. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion on the motion. All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. All who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion passes. All right, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davids. Thank you, Mr. LaClave. Let's spread the word and get it out there so people can be ready on Memorial Day to see this important unveiling.
Absolutely. Thank you.
All right, this brings us to item 10, which is the approval of the license agreement playground area east of Fourth Street. I see City Engineer Donahue.
Yes.
Sitting perched.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. The daycare that's located at 514 East Fourth Street, and that's the south side of Fourth Street between Knowles and Phillips, they currently have a license agreement for a playground area behind their business and that's within the city's public alley. They wish to extend the playground a little bit further to the west and so that they can expand that playground area. And so they would need a new license agreement from the city in order to do that. The proposed play area would consist of grass and woodchips and freestanding play equipment and it would be surrounded with a six-foot tall wood fence. There are two properties along the south side of that alley that would butt up to this proposed encroachment. One of them has a chain link fence with a gate and I think we heard from the resident at public comment about that one. And then the other one has an existing wood fence that would tie into this enclosure and basically act as the, the south wall of the enclosure. The petitioner did modify the encroachment and they pulled it up here on the screen here. So this shaded hatched area in the exhibit would be the playground area. It originally was just one rectangle, so he notched it out a little bit here so that the gate for this property would be able to be opened onto the private property and then there's three feet to walk out into the public alley. My understanding is, is that the property owner already spoke with the resident and I believe Rabbi Moshe is here tonight if you do have any questions for him. But we did notify both of those properties about the item tonight, so they did have a chance to come and speak on it. The proposed license agreement indemnifies the city and requires that the property owner provide the proper insurance coverage. Staff does not have any objections to the proposed license agreement.
Questions for Ms. Donahue? Commissioner Macy?
Thank you, Ms. Donahue. So I don't want to have to make you speak for the resident, but so there's the chain link fence, so the people who have those two properties, they presumably, they're not driving down there, they're.
Correct, there's no driveway or path. Yeah, it's a walking path if you have to get out.
So they're walking. And so what, the change that has been done would allow this resident to come out and go left, but not go right?
Correct, yes. But this alley, I mean, it ends here right now. Like currently, there's already an encroachment there, so they already can't really walk.
It's already.
To the east, yeah.
Okay. It's not quite ending. I wouldn't say that anymore.
Well, yeah, I, I appreciate that we have to keep the meeting on this side of the table, though. Thank you. Any other questions for the city engineer? Commissioner Douglas?
Yeah. I'll move approval of the resolution as submitted.
Okay. We have a motion by Commissioner Douglas. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy? All right, well, I know the petitioner is here and I'm going to go a little bit out of Robert's rules right now, even though there's a motion on the table. I don't know if the petitioner wants to address any of the questions or concerns or talk about the project at all. Rabbi Moshe, is there anything you want to say or do you, you don't have to, you're not obligated to. Yeah, if you want to come up and let us a little, know a little bit about what you're doing and.
Yeah, so I don't think there's a lot more to add. Just basically, I spoke with the person that live in the house she mentioned. It's, I guess she's renting this out or something like that. And he told me the team want to have access, so like you see, we changed the plan. So really I don't see her losing anything from having us building this. And we, it's going to cost us more and we're gonna, you know, we're gonna have to build more, but we changed the plan. She's still going to have access. And also starting to remember that there, it's still on, only on half of this space of the parking, so there's still another half to be totally open. So even if, let's say one day she's going to want to have like a whole open area, let's say even without a fence, she still can do it, you know, like she still have this whole space available for her, for herself. But even right now, we're not blocking anything, like she's still going to have access. Again, it's not for a truck, but enough to walk anyways. We, it's everything closed already on the right side, you know, and there's, the alley is done right there, so there's nowhere to go on the right side. And on the left side, she's going to have access. So at least if that's what she worried about, I don't see a reason why it's going to be an issue. I mean, we changed it because they expressed this problem, so.
And then maybe I have a question for, for Ms. Donahue. The, currently right now, this is an unpaved?
I believe it's asphalt paved.
Asphalt paved?
Yeah. So it's, it's for vehicles.
It's for vehicles.
It's, it's actually unpaved.
Is it unpaved?
Yes. Actually, I think the owner of the building previously, he put asphalt and the city told them to remove it because it's not, it's a public space or something like.
Yes, I stand corrected.
So really there's just, right now there's grass or nothing there and.
Okay. And the, and the access right now is, is a walking access path, basically. It's not a dirt alley or a paved alley. It's more of a mix of. It's not a really, I, since it's cut off, I imagine it's not a real official pass-through alley that you would use to service garbage or anything like that. I'm having a hard time seeing it on Google Maps.
Yeah, it is hard to see. So this, this is the alley here that kind of dead ends. This is the building in question with the playground behind it and then they're looking to extend it basically in line with where these parking stalls end. That's where the new encroachment would be. So this is all gravel, like a gravel, public alley as you noted. Thank you for that correction. So cars can come in and out, they can do deliveries, they can go to these other businesses. So I'm sure cars do use this. And it's not a sidewalk that is walkable.
So the, the current residents there could be using that parcel for automotive traffic?
Yeah, there's no driveways. Their driveways are off of Fifth Street, but they could be driving and, I don't know, dropping something off to their yard or something, yes.
Yeah, and, and so there are, there is access to the properties on Fifth Street with driveways and garages?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. See if my commissioners have any other more discussions with the motion on the table. I think, I think what the one concern here is, is that it is a public alley, right? And it's for, you know, it's, and often in these cases, throughout the city, these spaces are being used, you know, for any major significant official operations. We find that often sometimes we cede them to the property owners because they do require maintenance and all of that. We have a history here on this particular stretch of property, you can see it, where the right-of-way license agreements are being used in other ways. I think the one downside of this motion is that you have a home with the petitioner that came here tonight at 511 East Fifth, that I imagine will not have access to the property with their vehicle in the back through the alley, which I understand that concern. And up here, we have to weigh, you know, the overall highest and best use of, you know, that public land to put it towards much-needed, you know, daycare activities or for essentially almost exclusive use of one or two property owners for their vehicle, of which there's no hardship because there is parking in the front. I think if there wasn't a driveway or any access in the front, this might be a, a much more difficult decision because there isn't the ability to, you know, you'd have to park on Fifth or whatever, you couldn't access your property, but that's not the case here. And I, I do think as a compromise, the petitioner did make a reasonable accommodation to provide access at least by foot traffic there, which, you know, serves the purpose versus, and serving the purpose of, of having much-needed daycare facilities in the city of Royal Oak versus, you know, weighing that against, you know, the access of one or two vehicles, you know, periodically that otherwise can access their property. So that's the tough decision that we have to weigh here. So any other comments or questions? So, any other comments or questions? All right, well, I'll call for the vote. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed? Okay, the motion passes. With that drawing right there, correct? Okay. All right. Thank you, Rabbi. Good luck, and, you know, appreciate your efforts.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, this brings us to item 11, which is approval of license agreement, drive-through lane and public alley 31786 Woodward Avenue.
Yes, we have the property owner at 31786 Woodward approaches. They're planning to construct a new Tim Hortons drive-through near their south end of the parcel, and so this is located on the east side of Woodward, just south of Normandy. They are requesting a license agreement for use of the public alley behind the business to be used for vehicle stacking for the drive-through, and then also as an exit path out onto Chester Road, which you can see here in the site plan. The proposed site plan has already gone through the special land use permit and site plan approval process previously, and this license agreement is required as a condition of the approval. The proposed license agreement indemnifies the city and requires the proper insurance coverage, and staff does not have any objections to this license agreement.
Questions for city engineer Donahue? I know two of us have gone through this in excruciating detail, so we can also answer some questions from the planning commission, of which we both voted for it, I think it was unanimous.
I think so.
Lots of stuff I'm planning, hard to keep all track of every, all the book counts. I mean, to me, this makes sense in a number of ways. One, it's, you know, people need coffee. Two, it can help pull some people from Starbucks in a much faster, more expedient way. Actually, during the planning commission, I was looking up throughput, and nothing against Starbucks, I, you know, fine business, but I was looking at throughput times for Tim Hortons versus Starbucks, and I'm like, oh, man, this is much quicker.
And the coffee's better?
Yeah, it's Canadian, I mean, come on, you know?
Okay.
And so, and it also, there's another benefit for this, this is a, and I don't know if the chief will nod or wink or whatever, but this is an area that we've struggled with managing some of the cruisers that have expanded the season from January 1st to December 31st, and creating this area here, this stack situation, you know, will kind of help alleviate extra parking spots for folks to park and loiter, and, you know, create complications for the property owner here, and for our police department to have to respond. So there's a lot of other collateral benefits to it. So, I mean, we looked at it, and there were some questions about the stacking lanes, but they answered them pretty sufficiently, and, and the direction of traffic, and it looked pretty good, so. And it will make it look nice on Woodward, you know, it'd be a nice little spot there. Anything I missed?
No, sir.
Commissioner Colo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This has been through the planning commission, it's been through ZVA, both approved it, I think you're right, it's gonna be a great improvement to Woodward, hopefully make it quieter for the residents there also, so I move approval of the resolution.
Motion by Commissioner Colo, second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion? All right, with that, I'll call for the vote. Alls in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Those opposed, motion passes. Okay. Okay, that brings us to item 12, which is the special assessment standard resolution five paving of Parkdale Avenue and paving of Fair Grove Avenue. And as a reminder, thank you, Mr. Grotowski, we need a roll call vote for each one of these, okay? So before we forget, before our city engineer commences her information, I just want to make sure, you know, we're gonna do a roll call on that. Okay?
Thank you. Yes, we're here to present standard resolution five for two of our special assessment streets. We finished paving Parkdale Avenue between Rochester and Ardmore this summer, and we also paved Fair Grove, the south half of that block between Forest and 149 feet to the north. For Parkdale, the total project cost was four and a half percent lower than what we had presented in standard resolution two. For Fair Grove, we were also under the cost, much more at 36 percent, under the cost presented in standard resolution two. So for that reason, we haven't exceeded anything that we've told the residents, so there's no reason for another public hearing on either of these resolutions. We did notify all the properties that this would be on the agenda tonight, haven't heard any feedback or negative feedback, just questions from some residents. And so we are here to recommend approval of standard resolution five for Parkdale, and then again for Fair Grove.
Questions? All right, we'll start with Parkdale. Anyone want to move with the standard resolution? We have a motion by Commissioner Macy. Is there a second? Second by Commissioner Cheesem. Okay. Discussion. Commissioner Macy, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Douglas, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Colo, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Herzog, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheesem, how do you vote?
Yes.
Okay, we have unanimous yeses. I ask that the city clerk enter those officially into the record. Okay, good. All right. Um, I think that's it, right?
Next one.
Yeah, we gotta do Fair Grove, but I think we're good on Parkdale. All right, Fair Grove. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy, we have a second by Commissioner Herzog. Start with the motion maker. First of all, is there any discussion? I presume not, but it's better not to presume. Commissioner Macy, how do you, you gotta let me ask the question, okay?
I'm very sensitive.
Okay, I know my body language is very over-communicative. Commissioner Macy, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
Commissioner Douglas, how do you vote?
I vote yes.
I vote yes. Commissioner Colo, how do you vote?
Yeah.
Commissioner Herzog, how do you vote?
Yes.
Commissioner Cheesem, how do you vote?
Yes.
All right. Six unanimously's on Fair Grove.
So I need food at those early meetings. Snacks at the next one.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, just before we move on, not for staff here, but just so everyone here knows, a resident approached me that they've already petitioned the city, or in the process petitioned the city to get another road paved, thanks to the resolution we passed in the last meeting, to make it more formidable, so...
Wonderful.
There's some more roads hopefully coming up.
Three?
Four, all right.
Well, that makes two, because I don't have one also.
Because I just said three of them.
I think Commissioner Colo wanted to say that he paved the way for this to happen.
One left.
One left. One left. All right, this brings us to item 13, a word of contract cap 2361, planning year 2023, community development, block grant-funded improvements at Lockman Park.
See if we can do our best to set you up for that last chill. Recently, staff sent out a bid for park improvements at Lockwood Park, and Lockwood Park is located near 12 Mile and Campbell. The improvements would be limited to the north side of the park, and we would be removing the ball field sidewalks, both tennis courts and the basketball court. And in the, in its place would be a new tennis court, one new tennis court, a basketball court, new sidewalks, a new, new field, new playfield, along with a concrete pad and vinyl surrounding for seasonal portage on, and traditional benches, trees, things of that nature. So six firms submitted bid responses. There was a low bid response from a firm that staff believe didn't demonstrate that they had seasoned experience in a project of this, of this scale and of this type. So we did go to the next lowest firm, which is Roller Property Services. And Roller Property Services, we currently have them under contract for improvements at Hudson Park, and that'll commence up again in a few more weeks. And they've been a terrific firm to, to work with, they've had very few change orders, and those that they've had have been reasonable and have been modest in price. And so the concern with going with the lowest bidder is their inexperience, and also bidding the project that low, the concern of if they're awarded the contract, that there may be change orders in excess that would go above and beyond even the next lowest bidder, which, again, just Roller, which is what, who we're suggesting. We do receive funding for this project from our, from the Community Development Block Grant Program, which is our entitlement funds that we receive on an annual basis from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And you can see in the chart, in the memo, that the project, the total of the project is still under the total budget that is approved, that you approve for this year. And there is a standard, or there is a resolution rather, for you if you agree with the choice of contractor, as well as what staff is recommending.
Questions for Mr. Murphy? Commissioner Cheesem.
So I didn't hear you mention the playground equipment, and I seen here you're trying to salvage some of the playground equipments. I'm wondering about, I used to take my daughter to this park a lot, and the one climbing thing was looking pretty rough even a couple of years ago, so I'm just kind of wondering about that playground.
So the only equipment that's gonna be salvaged is there's a spring toy dinosaur, and then there's a hippo.
Yes, I'm familiar.
And then we're actually preserving the tots' wings, so those are really, those will be the only three items that would be salvaged from the, from the existing play structure.
And the others will be replaced, then, as part of this? Like, I'm thinking about like this sort of mountain-y, climb-y thing that was kind of cracking.
Yes, everything will be replaced with the new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Macy.
Okay, I had that same question, because actually it doesn't say in here, and I don't think I heard Mr. Murphy say either new playground. It says outdoor fitness equipment, which I didn't hear you say, and I didn't see anything about playground, and that's quite a large structure that's there, and so it makes me nervous if the plan is to remove it and not replace it. So that question, and then also, I think I heard Mr. Murphy say ball field, and I don't, maybe that's in here in the grading and the grassy, but I wasn't sure, and is that just that green, green area? The current field?
Mr. Fideli answered the question about the play equipment, but the latter question of the play field, on the north side of the park right now, there are two tennis courts that go right up to the northwest corner of the property lines, and those will be removed, and that whole entire area will be for a much, a larger soccer field, and also gets striped for football field at the appropriate time as well. So that, that north side will be dedicated to the new field.
Okay, and where's the tennis court gonna be?
The tennis court and the basketball court and the outdoor fitness equipment are all where the playground equipment currently is.
Yeah, yeah, all right, you're getting to my question here. All right, John, let me hear it.
All right, so yes, the ball field does refer to the soccer field slash multipurpose grass area that would consume most of the northern part, and then the tennis court and basketball court would be positioned more towards the middle of the park next to the play features. It's a ninja course, so there's a lot of climbing obstacles, all within fall zone range. It's not like the American Ninja Warrior TV show that we see, we see, but it's, it's a ninja course that's sort of geared to reach our teen demographic. So when we do a lot of these park improvements, we try to diversify the equipment that we have, and this one is, has an intent to target the teen population.
Okay, as long as you know I love that, because I feel like our parks are missing things for teens. I do wonder a little bit about having this park be the one that we target teens at, because it's right next to an elementary school, and so that's, if we're gonna do that, shouldn't we, shouldn't that be where, at...
The Arboretum.
No, no, no. Minajer? What's right behind the roms?
Oh, yeah, Minajer.
Anyway, so I just, like, what's the age range for this? Like, is there, is there still somewhere for elementary students to, age students to come enjoy this, or is it really only geared for teens to adults?
So it's 13 and older, but that's not to say that anyone younger can't use it. Even with our play structures that are geared to five to 12-year-olds, we do see a lot of the age groups below five use the structure, so even though it's geared towards 13-year-olds and higher, essentially all ages can use it. And there is a brand-new play structure that the school's put up at the Keller Elementary, so, and in my opinion, that sort of covered the typical play structure component, and then we could put out a teen amenity.
I, yeah, that's what I was gonna say, is that, you know, there we have the school and its, you know, play features, which are geared towards younger kids. And then in this geography, for these parks, not just as an attraction, but like if, you know, you have the parking lot there for Keller and stuff, like people want to drive to it and drop their kids off or whatever, but then just even as an amenity for the thousands of people that live in that area, now they have, you know, the school they can go to, like Mr. Fideli's saying, for their younger kids, and then, you know, for older kids come here, I think it makes sense in that regard.
So I'm not gonna make a huge fuss about it, but I will just say, after school, though, that, that playground is used, as we know, as Keller parents for latchkey, and so every single day after school, Keller parents take their kids over to Lockman and hang out. And so I think, my, my theory is what John's sort of hinting at is that they're just gonna go on this ninja, because it's gonna be awesome, like a ninja course, they'll love it, but it probably won't be great for the littlest kids, like the kindergarten and the first graders, but, I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I'm not debating any further, except to say that...
No perfect, always compromise.
No perfect, yep.
I'll go with Commissioner Cheesem, then Commissioner Colo.
So I guess I have a few more points to push back on with this, and that is, you know, I agree, like, that a lot of parents of young kids use this park, even though there are the other playgrounds nearby, one because school's in session a lot of times. The other reason is it's one of our very few wooded-covered parks, so on a really hot day, it's a great park to take your kid to, you know, little ones to play. So I think that not having something adequate that's designed for younger kids, there is a loss to the area, even with the school, because the school playground is extremely sun-exposed. I guess the other couple of things I was thinking, like you mentioned, a soccer field there. I will admit to you all that our family's nickname for this park is Malaria Park, because it is super water-soaked a lot of times, so I do wonder how well that, that field is gonna work for soccer. I don't know if it's different further north in that park, but there's a lot of water that sits there. I've seen kids ice skating on it. And the third point, hold on. I guess I want to know, this is a very unique kind of playground that you're proposing. I've heard it, when I was on Parks and Rec, you did talk about this, I think it's a really neat idea for teenagers. Is this particular vendor experienced with installing those features? And I think they're going to the trees, right? So can you talk about how it's using the trees and their experience with putting features on trees, or maybe it's different from what you had talked about previously?
So this concept and design is different from incorporating like a treehouse-type design. This is more surface and a couple elevations, nothing too high. This particular roller contractor, the play structure at Hudson Park does have some rope elements and some other elevated play components that they have done a good job and have been excellent as far as putting those pieces together, so I'm confident that they will be able to handle this scope of work.
And so just to confirm, right, are you're not using the trees in the park as like the structures to support these features?
Correct, the, the structures will be tied to the trees, or utilizing the trees.
They will be utilizing the trees, but they're, they're tied to the trees. Wait, no.
They will not be utilizing the trees.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Colo, then Commissioner Douglas.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that tree idea was from a, I don't know, 2018, 2020, running, that was really cool, I remember seeing it, it was like a tree chop play place, but I know that's, that's not in the cards. So I get, you know, a couple of points that I think we should kind of talk about, like, looking at, will an elementary-age kid use this? I just, I look at Lawson Park, which is designed for, you know, that 12 to, you know, 12 to senior age range, and a kid third...
senior age range and kid, they're kids, you know, my children's age on it all the time. You know, I have a four-year-old, eight-year-old and they're constantly on it. So I guess, you know, I think elementary-age kids will find a way to use it, more than likely. Not, I haven't seen the designs, but I wouldn't be too hung up on the age thing. What I do like about this design though is that it looks at the Parks and Rec master plan and it hits a lot of the key components that we're looking for, including taking out a tennis court. I know if former Commissioner Dubbuck were sitting here, he'd probably be upset because he enjoys using that quite a bit, but it's in the plan to right-size that park to one tennis court. So, and then adding a trail from the tennis court over. So we're hitting a lot of our plan and our goals with this, so I think that this is a, a great addition.
Yes, we've had many a scrimmage there, Commissioner Dubbuck and I. Yeah, I do, and I, and I hear the feedback about younger kids and I appreciate what Commissioner Colo says, and I'm going to stop because I remembered I had Commissioner Douglas to say some points.
Yes. Mr. Fidelli will not be surprised to hear me say that I would like to make sure that somebody sits on benches and confirms that they're comfortable before making the final purchase, if, if we still have that option open. And then I also have to say that I'm going to have to go home and face my husband who plays tennis on those tennis courts every sunny morning during the summer. And, and you've just made my life a living hell, so thanks a lot.
It's going to be a new court.
Yeah, that's true, but then, you know, somebody may be playing basketball on it.
He should give him Smith, but you're in the first rec master plan in the process.
Anyway.
Yeah, and I, and I think like, I mean, those points are, are well-received and well-understood. When I look and I see parks that are shaded on a hot day, you know, we are getting hot days in the summer and we have splash pads and we have, you know, Whittier Park, we have Star JC, there are a few other options. But when I think about like where would you want to put a, like, a course like this, I would think it'd be awesome in a place that's kind of wooded and shaded a little bit, you know what I mean? It's just aesthetically and, and there's trade-offs, right? So the trade-off is that if somebody wants to play with their kid in a conventional play structure, yeah, there might be latchkey going on during the school, they might have to go to a park, you know, nearby, Cody Park or wherever. And it creates a logistical issue for a handful of people. I think though that the use of this park will grow dramatically. I think that when you have a course like this, you have, you know, the public available parking at Keller, which is great for, if we put a soccer field there, and then I think while younger kids are playing soccer, you know, their older siblings can come play here and get utility out of it. So, you know, there's.
You're right.
Well, your kids don't go and.
Can't be in with me.
Well, not your kids.
We like kind of one barrel.
Older kids, you said, you said older kids.
Yeah, like 12 years old, 13 years old. Yeah, like going and, you know, checking it out and trying it. I mean, maybe not all kids, like nothing's 100%.
I'm just saying they don't go to these games.
Oh, they don't go to Danny's games? Well.
It's a sport.
Oh, I got you. So I, I think that, you know, what I like most about this is that we're doing something unique and different, right? We're doing, instead of, and that's something that when I was on Parks and Rec, I always thought like every park should have its own identity, you know? So if you, I had this whole vision and dream, I think you shared it with Commissioner Macy when she was on Parks and Rec, that every one of our major community parks has a theme. Like one might be space and science, the other one might be, you know, literature and culture and stuff like that. So is this quite a big jump into that? No, but is it something unique and cool in a wooded area that provides uniqueness more than the standard brown, green and beige slides? Yeah. So I like it from that point of view. So if there is a motion, I would be supporting it, even though I understand some of the trade-offs. Commissioner Colo.
Mr. Mayor, thank you for sharing parts of your dream with us tonight. And, you know, to make sure that all kids are created equal, let's continue.
It's a dream, it's a vision, it's a roadmap for success, my friend.
Thank you.
For all the $40 tonight that the citizens of Royal Oak paid me for, it is all yours.
So with that, and with thanks to everyone who put time into this, I move approval of the resolution.
We have a motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Macy. All right, discussion?
Tell us what we're going to do.
Commissioner Cheesem?
I appreciate the, more information about the playground equipment and I'm willing to support the motion.
All right. All right, call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, good teamwork there. All right, that brings us to the last item on tonight's agenda, proposed agreement for new phone system and service contract, Mr. Grotowski.
Thank you, Mayor. On the agenda for your consideration is an agreement. It's a two-part agreement. One part is for the purchase of, I believe, 407 phones that's spread across 11 city-owned facilities and a service component of that agreement. As laid out in the report, our current phone system has reached its end of life. We are at the end of the contract with our current provider with regard to that phone system. And so IT, knowing that, two years ago, became a member of a competitive, nationwide competitive bid cooperative and as part of that received a lawful competitive bid process and as part of that awarded that bid to Mitel in that bid process or RFP process. The contract is with Millennium Technologies, which is a gold service partner of Mitel, and thus are bound by all the bid specs that are part of this agreement. By entering this agreement, the city stands to realize an approximate savings of about $70,000 on the life of the contract compared to what we are currently paying for the same service since approximately 2020. And there, even though the contract price is contemplated to be paid at the commencement of this agreement, it's for a firm price for the purchase of the phones and a five-year service agreement that includes warranty, licenses, everything necessary to keep that system up and running. The expected lifespan of this new system is approximately 10 years and paying upfront is also part of the reason that there is a savings involved. So with that said, your interim IT director is here in present if you have any specific technical questions. But with that, I'll turn it over to you to make the call.
Very, very good.
Well played.
Sorry, it doesn't count towards my allocation.
How long are you sitting on that? Just came up with it.
All right, questions for Mr. Grotowski. I guess I have one question and maybe it's also a point of, you know, probably going to be looking at this a little bit in the budgeting. Maybe we should have talked a little bit about the CIP, but this is state-of-the-art technology that, I mean, the biggest risk, one of the biggest risks that we see coming down the pike is cybersecurity and, you know, everything from scams, phishing, to, you know, holding everything hostage with, you know, paying, having to pay extortion payments and things of that nature. Do you believe this equipment kind of helps us, at least with the gold support and all of that, at least protect a little bit against that, anything that could affect the phone systems?
Yes, the current, this current system is a on-premise system, which is, there's a lot of cloud-based systems out there, which don't always meet government CGIS requirements, criminal justice information requirements. This being an on-premise system, which puts it on this side of our firewall, it's a lot more protection in this design. There's a lot of criminal justice information rules that we follow. This meets those requirements, whereas some cloud-based systems would be less expensive, but they don't meet those requirements.
Gotcha.
They might one day, but right now they don't.
And the second part of that is not a question, but just food for thought. At some point, we probably want to get some sort of assurances that, you know, I know we're doing the work, but, you know, having a quick, without showing all of our, how our, you know, sausage is made, that, you know, we've gone through and done an assessment on our risk profile related to attacks. And, you know, if there's anything more we need to do to protect what we have, either in terms of policy, funding, budget, whatever, you know, we should look at that.
Yes, I agree.
Okay. Any other questions? We have a contract in front of us. All right, geez, dial it down a bit, Commissioner Colo.
That was my third one. It wasn't as good. Nothing to call home about.
Look, I don't feel like.
I got you, a two-parter. I don't feel like staff phoned it in when they did the research on this. They have it done. This is budgeted, it's saving money over whatever we're paying right now, so I move approval of the contract.
The motion by Commissioner Colo, is there a second? Second by Commissioner Douglas. Discussion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say ahoy, ahoy. All those opposed, say no. All right, motion.
How does that count?
All those, do you want me to do it over again? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Ahoy, ahoy is, I'll give you a historical context of the first telephone that was invented by Alexander Graham Bell and the first message he gave was ahoy, not hello. All right, the most.
Mr. Watson, he's probably or something.
Motion passes. All right.
Serious things here.
All right, notwithstanding any more gratuitously horrible humor, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion by Commissioner Macy, second by Commissioner Cheesem. Discussion on this critical motion. All right, with none, I'll call for the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, motion passes. Adjourned.